August fourteenth. First up for the planning board is Andy Beddison and Century Mill. We're gone for phase two and four. The bond release process schedule, including the work completed in these phases.
Okay. How are you?
Good.
Good. Thank you for your time. We are just about there. That the contractor kind of we scheduled for September fifteenth. He isn't the first contractor to start. There has to be some work done before that. But the main contractor is scheduled for September fifteenth. If he's not there on September fifteenth, don't have a heart attack because they a lot of times they don't show up exactly on September fifteenth. That's the target date. And I've been trying to think how to explain the what I'm going to ask the board to consider in the simplest way. And so I think I have got it in my mind in the simplest form possible. Is anybody doing the construction business?
You are, aren't you?
Yes, I am.
James is.
I am.
Normally in a construction contract, in my experience and in my understanding that it's an industry standard, if there is such a thing, is that the typical holdback retainage, sign a contract with somebody for million dollars, typical retainage is ten percent. So as you're making payments, if he's done a hundred thousand dollars worth of work, you'll only give him ninety grand, you're always holding ten percent. You feel you have retention?
A little bit.
Okay. Industry standard also is that when the person has performed the contract to substantial completion, the holdback of ten percent is reduced to a smaller percentage. So it might go from, in my experience, I've done a lot of contracts, goes from ten percent to five percent. That's the concept I want to talk about. We're starting at the board or the starting point is a hundred and fifty percent here. So you want to hold, not one chance, but you want to have a hundred and fifty percent for a hundred thousand dollars worth of work, one and a half times. What I'm asking the board to do is slightly, is consider a slight change to that. And that would be when we are substantially complete, instead of having a hundred and fifty percent, would you consider a hundred and twenty-five percent?
Well, we're not going to hold, I mean, if you finish the work, you're going to release-
Prior to the work being a hundred percent done.
Okay.
So the insurance policy and whatever cash you hold when we are one hundred percent done, that's a separate thing.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The contractor wants to get some money along the way. He wants some progress payments. He asked for two progress payments and a final payment. And I may be able to work out having him get one payment. And so basically, when we are, what I'm asking is, I'll be more specific. When the only work remaining is the top coat and all the other work is substantially complete, a substantial complete doesn't mean a hundred percent complete, it means pretty damn close. Reduce down the percentage from a hundred and fifty percent to a hundred and twenty-five percent because that would allow a reduction in the bond amount at that point where the contractor can get a substantial amount of money. It's not what he wants, but it's substantial and he'd probably make this work. You'd still be holding a hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost of the remaining work. And the cost of the remaining work is a very defined thing to do. Top coat payment.
Okay, so kind of-
And mostly everything else is not substantial completion and everything else.
So to put numbers into what you were saying.
Yes.
Is this the seventy thousand that we-
No.
Okay, so-
This is, this is before, the seventy thousand relates to when I am one hundred percent done. When I'm one hundred percent done, there is no work remaining.
Yep.
The town has the right to hold seventy-
Correct.
Seventy, seven, ten percent of the seventy-
Yeah, which is seventy, which is obviously seventy.
Seventy, right, right.
No, he's just saying the multiplier. So you're saying, you're saying after Fred reviews it and he approves it.
And he, and he says-
It's substantial.
-substantially done with everything except top coat. Substantial completion is not one hundred percent done.
So we could do, we could do a partial release at that point, but you want a partial release plus you want us to reduce the multiplier so we can get more money back.
Well, you'd, normally you would, what you're saying is a hundred percent accurate, but I would be entitled to the reduction in the bond.
That's what, well, you are entitled to a reduction in the bond.
Right, no. So I'm really asking-
I'm just, I'm saying when it's completed and Fred reviews it, we can release it. But you're saying at that point you also want us to change the multiplier-
To a hundred and twenty-five percent.
So you can get a little bit more back to pay your people?
Yes.
With the good faith that a big chunk of it besides the top coat is done?
I think basically everything is essentially done.
Substantially complete on everything else. That does not mean a hundred percent, but it's really close.
Okay, so just to play devil's-
Substantial completion is like a defined industry term. It's, it's-
I know it's substantial.
Yeah, yeah, okay. If we were to, you know, if we got to that point and for whatever reason the top two coat didn't go on.
Yes.
And-
Although there's no reason not to.
I'm, if for any reason we, the town had to pull the bond and finish the work, would the town contracting with somebody, would that hundred and twenty-five percent cover the cost?
Yes, it'd be twenty-five percent more than, approximately twenty-five percent more than you need.
It should because the way-
Well, other than-
If we use phrase numbers.
If we, well, other than, if the town contracts with somebody, we need to pay prevailing wage, not, not whatever the-
I'm happy to give you the contract. The contractor who's doing the work is New England paving. He's buying the material from Keene, so, which is local, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, that's good. But, I mean, I want to make sure that we're covered and that hundred and twenty-five percent would cover if, if the town had to go out to, out to bid to get the work done, is that hundred and twenty-five percent going to cover? You know, that, that extra multiplier, a big part of that is to cover, you know-
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage.
I'm not, I would-
And is that, would that-
I, I thought about that. And you're looking at a very much a worse case, but I-
It's what we have to do.
I understand. I hate looking at absolute worst cases, but-
Well-
I used to do that when I was younger, it kind of drove me crazy.
What's the variation in prevailing wage?
But what I was going to say is, I don't think putting down pavement has much labor involved, frankly. It's probably, the whole job's going to take two days to pave that road, so how much labor are we talking about? Can't be that much. It's two days' worth of work by about six, six feet.
I mean, I, you know, it's also, the truckers would get, you know, get that pervading-
It's two, it's two days' worth of work.
Okay.
By a, by a-
It's something we need to consider, is all, is all I'm saying. I'm not, not trying to throw, I just want to make sure that the town is, is covered properly.
So let me just schedule. So the intent is September fifteenth, you're going to start the paving or the majority-
Your intent would be to start work before that.
Okay.
And this, so it's roughly, we would have like a month.
Yep, to finish that.
If we started right away, it would be like a month.
Were you putting the top coat down before the fall or are you waiting to, I can't remember-
No, in the fall, it has to be in the fall.
Yeah, okay, that's right, just wanted to-
Yeah, has to be this fall.
So you put everything down in the fall, it goes through the winter, Fred looks at it in the spring and says it's survived the winter, we're good.
Yep.
And then everything could go forward.
Right. Over the winter, you would hold the insurance policy, which I think we've gotten really close to exactly, well, pretty good, right?
I think really, yeah, I mean, it really comes down to board, to the board now. I mean, move on. Well, before we get into that, so over the winter, assume that did, you know, you've finished everything, what are we holding over the winter? The insurance policy and-
Lots of amount of money yet to be determined, yeah.
And that's to be determined by the board. Okay, so we have that amount to be determined.
Yes.
And then this reduction in the multiplier. Well, yes, the, so there's-
By that time, it's gone because-
No, I know, I know, that, I'm just trying to think there's three things we're trying to kind of finalize. The reduction in the multiplier, the-
Which is about fifteen thousand, is that what you're, the number you're looking for?
Well, you know, I haven't done that much.
It'd probably be like twenty-five percent of eighty-eight thousand, yeah. What about that is?
Well, no, well, eighty-eight thousand is the top coat.
Oh, actually, I mean, what's the-
Everything else is a hundred percent done. And I'm saying it's substantially complete.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
There'll probably be some stuff.
So there'll be some stuff that's not quite done, but-
But it's-
But we're also reducing to a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not asking you to not consider the stuff not done. I'm asking you to be, to reduce the multiplier so it's an exact science.
Just on the top coat?
On any, once we're substantially complete with all work and only the top coat remains, if we could reduce the multiplier, it would be helpful because then I could get the contractor an amount of money that I think we could help do the work, he'll go take on.
Would you have more or less than a hundred thousand dollars remaining?
You might have a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Could you say your name, your resident?
Might have, you know, maybe there'll be a hundred and twenty-five thousand also remaining, a hundred and thirty thousand. But piddly, you know, like punch out sort of.
Thoughts? Anybody?
I don't know. I'm a hundred percent. Totally against it. I understand, you know, you get to a progression and then you can release it. Who determines the substantial amount of work done? Is that going to be Fred?
That's Fred.
The town, yeah. It's, it's an exact science. They'll still tell you exactly what needs to be done. And you're going to still be holding, industry-wise, five times that amount. Normally, industry standard would be like, holdbacks and retainage would get reduced to five percent from ten percent.
The two's not at the very end, though.
At substantial completion. The work would be on the contract.
Before we consider, I guess, this, do we want to just make sure that, I guess, Erica, where are we with the insurance policy?
So a couple of weeks ago now, Andy and I had a conference call with town council and we sort of hashed out the various forms of surety. We ruled out that the lots within phase one could be used as proper bond because those lots do not lie within the phases where we're looking to get road access. So we ruled that out.
Okay.
So moving forward, we talked about the insurance policy and essentially we came up with what we thought the scope of the policy should cover. So I sent those edits to Andy. Andy had his insurance company incorporate them, but there were a couple that they did not agree to. And it really comes down to the section, the exclusion section of the policy. So in your package is the email with my edits and then the updated policies, where you could see sort of the changes. So in my email, I'd asked, in addition, please add the word normal to wear and tear in the exclusion section and then remove the word deterioration, but they, they could not do that.
Can you point us to pages?
The first, the second page, bottom paragraph.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
The agent also wrote a letter.
They did, yeah. So in your package is the letter from the insurance company explaining why they couldn't make those changes.
So they'll take your changes except it is an earthquake or a volcanic eruption. Not to worry about those.
That was not, yeah, those weren't asked to be changed.
Nuclear hazard would have bigger issues than road acceptance.
The, the-
Yeah, not too worried about CMA afterwards.
Oh, so these, this stuff that's listed, what they will not, they will not, they will not cover, but that's not what I was asking.
The only edits I was asking for was to add the word normal in front of wear and tear and to remove the word deterioration, but they could not make those edits.
Yeah, there are two words.
Okay.
It's, I want to put words in.
So two words, other than two words, it's-
It's essentially the same thing, right?
And I thought, when I read the email, the reason why they can't do the wear and tear is because it's, it's exactly that. It's, they can't ensure against-
Yeah, if you pave a road and somebody grabs it-
It gets used on it, they can't-
That's considered wear and tear, so I mean, that, it's-
And they wouldn't-
Basically, it's not an occurrence, it's not an event you file insurance for.
It's a normalness, yeah. So I kind of get why insurance wouldn't cover that. I guess from an insurance policy, I mean, I'm okay with that.
So Erica, instead of deterioration, you just want a normal wear and tear in all those points?
Well, I didn't want there to be any confusion based on our previous meeting. Mark, you had some concerns about wear and tear and wears in line between much wear and tear and much damage. So I was trying to clear that up. I was trying to get away from that potential argument, right?
Yeah.
So that, that was the reason for those edits.
But so, so they're, they're accepting the work, the verbiage of damage or deterioration of top coat, so that would take care of workmanship. Okay. And I think I'm fine with how it is.
And then I did talk to town council today about these edits and he, he hasn't really approved it or not approved it. It's more he's just been making comments along the way.
Sure.
Because this is not a form of surety that's listed in sub judicial control law. This is something other than that. This is a property damage insurance policy. So he has just said, you know, make sure that the board understands that there is some risk involved with this because this doesn't a hundred percent guarantee the work. This isn't, you know, this is an surety that we could make a claim, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they'll pay off of it.
Right.
So just be aware of it.
I, I'm, I think I'm okay with this.
Twenty-eight dollars to cover terrorism.
So I guess my, unless you guys have specific questions about this, my next question would be, is if we're good with this, and the reason why I'm jumping a little bit ahead is because in order to consider the reduction of the multiplier, I kind of want to get a full picture of all three items that we're working at. So if we're good with this, what is the amount, when it's a hundred percent done, that we are retaining until the-
We haven't done that part yet.
That's what I wanted to-
I had proposed, now keep in mind, you have an insurance policy now. If somebody runs into the curb, that's an occurrence, it says right in there.
Erica, do you-
It's covered, so damage is covered.
Do you have the email printed out where you had the suggested values, options from-
I had it in my packet, I didn't put it in your packet, I can get it to you if you'd-
No.
These were just, I was just sort of following some ideas of what the board could-
Yeah, but instead of us just randomly picking a number, that seems really around differentality.
So just, I just wanted to sort of close the loop on the insurance policy. So one, the, the only outstanding item that I see is if you're okay with the scope of the policy. So your insurance company came back and said, because the, our town council had said make sure that the town is an additional insured on the policy, but that really is regarding a liability policy, this is property damage, so-
They call the loss paid.
So loss paid. And I just checked with town council and he said, yes, he was like, that's, that's fine.
So we're good?
With, yeah, so that'll get-
That has to be changed.
That has to be changed.
The town needs to be named as a loss paid.
Okay.
So that way we can submit a claim, we can get the pay.
Initially, when Erica requested that, I called my agent, he said, but the term additional insured isn't for this type of policy, it should be a loss paid. So I-
So everybody agrees?
Everybody agrees.
Okay, okay.
So should we vote to accept this?
Why don't we work on everything first and then-
I'm just trying to think of other ways.
Quick question, what's this, what's the subs warranty for, for the work? I thought that's what we talked about.
Legally materials.
For how long?
Until, till that, the date after the town meeting.
Date after what?
Town meeting.
Oh, thank you.
So next May.
So if you're willing, the town would accept it.
Which would be next May. So their warranty is, if something happens between now or whatever, when the work starts in next May, they will come out and fix it?
Yes.
Okay, on, on the reduc-, so-
And the pavement would also have a warranty from the-
From the plant?
From the plant.
On the mix?
On the mix, yeah, so.
So the paving is going to be done roughly September fifteenth?
Through October.
Or sometime through October, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it can be done, but it's later than November fifteenth.
Okay, and at that point, we're meeting every two weeks. So if the work is done and Fred has approved it, our next meeting, we can improve the release and, you know, so I don't see that there's that big, and, you know, we're already in mid-August, so we're not talking that big a window where this multiplier, you know, the, the little bit covered, multiplier should really affect anything. You know, I mean, worst case, you pave the day after our meeting and you have to wait two weeks to get a check.
Right, but it's, it's the, it's the agreement, it's what the contractor is requesting is the issue. He wants to get a certain amount of money. He wants to get a certain amount of money. He wanted two payments. He wanted the entire amount broken into two payments. I'm going to go back to him and say it's one payment, but he wants it back.
But to Mark's point, though, so you get paved on the fifteenth or a meeting on the eleventh, I think.
We meet on the eleventh, we meet on the, on the twenty-fifth.
Right, so it should be reviewed, right, already by Fred by the next meeting, so that whole reduction might not even come into play. It might just, right? You'll have, you'll be out there while it's being paved and it'll be reviewed, I assume, and we'll have a review on the twenty-fifth.
And you'd be able to act on it in the next meeting.
So that one hundred and twenty-five percent might not even come into play. We might just say that you're good, right?
Sure.
Yep. Unless you're not good.
But I, it's something that he wants in his contract, so-
Prior to the start, beginning of the work?
Yeah, he wants, we have to sign a contract in order to make the numbers work, we need the reduction.
I mean, to me, looking at the dates like that, it's either we're going to accept, we're going to review it and it's going to be good and we're giving that all back, or it's not going to be good and we won't give any back, you know, for that particular item. So it's like, what's the point of the one twenty-five?
Well, I'm, I'm less concerned about the multiplier than I am with the amount that we're holding back through the winter. I guess I'm, could, like you said, it's a closed timeframe, this is all going to be done.
Yeah.
I, I-
Yeah, I mean, I, I see, I see it as two separate issues.
It is, it is definitely two separate issues. I think you're right.
So, kind of want to close on this and then, then we'll, we'll can roll into discussing the whole winter piece of it.
So insurance policy, we think is good. The, we're talking about the one twenty-five, which, whether it matters or not, I don't know. And so then the, the final piece is how much do we hold back? And so Erica, in an email, I don't know-
Can we close on the, on the, on the multiplier?
Well, I thought we wanted to discuss all-
Well, I, okay.
I tried to close something, then you guys said, let's discuss it all, so now I'm going to discuss all.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sorry, I, I kind of kept going back and forth, so.
Yeah, okay.
So Erica suggested a few different numbers. I don't know if everybody saw it, but hold twenty-five percent back for the pavement, top cores, driveway sidewalks and berms without markup, which is like thirty-one thousand, point percent is twenty-five thousand, ten percent plus a markup of one point five is like nineteen thousand. Then she had hold bond for cleaning out detention basins, wetland, crossing drain systems plus markup. That was like twenty-two thousand. So that would be in, if we wanted to do that, it's like a menu, right? If we wanted to do that on top of-
I was just trying to brainstorm some different ideas of what we could potentially hold back money for.
And then, then she said ten percent of current bond, bond, not the original, which is twenty-seven thousand, five percent is thirteen thousand. So it's just this different numbers, so I think, I think like the, you know, just for the pavement, top cores, driveway sidewalks and berms is what we're worried about. And Erica said twenty percent, which is twenty-five thousand, so, I mean, maybe we can go down to that. I don't know. It's kind of, like you said, you're just spitballing really.
A little bit, yeah. I mean, we do know that we have the insurance policy and it works as we think it will.
Yeah.
That'll, should cover the damage for many of those items, but those are the items that obviously-
And we're just kind of anchoring it on some line item.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
As opposed to just defining a value, say, we want to hold X.
Like she has ten percent there plus a markup, which you have twenty thousand.
And it's kind of, okay, what numbers can I pull out and adjust the markups to give a range?
Make it seem legit.
Yeah, to make it seem legit and give us a variety of-
I mean, yeah, in one sense, I think, like you said, the insurance policy is going to potentially cover damage to pavement, driveways, berms and stuff like that, so, but the cleaning out of detention bases, wetland crossing, drain system, all that type of stuff like that would not be covered under any insurance policy. So that would be something, you know, a potential amount to look at.
So what's that number? So rounding out all those options, it's like, you know, settling around twenty thousand or so?
Yeah, twenty-five, yeah.
So if we just said hold back twenty thousand for any potential issues with the pavement or, you know, cleaning out that needs to be done, what should say, cleaning out detention basins, wetland crossings, drain systems?
Keep in mind, when we do it, this would be if something happened after it's already done.
No, I know, I see, yeah. So we're just saying, you know, for example, hold back twenty thousand plus the insurance policy over the winter.
I think I'm good with that versus the seventy.
Yeah, I mean, with the insurance policy and getting it much more fine tuned and noting that it takes, it says damage and deterioration right there, I'm definitely okay with a reduction.
Yeah.
Oh, make it progress, right? A lot of work, but we're getting there.
So, all right.
Thank you very much for your, all the effort.
So we're saying twenty thousand insurance policy, which would be with-
I mean, that's just, what do other people think on that number?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't have time to really watch this look at this.
And then shoot, shoot your minds, hopefully we won't be talking about this.
I'm not, I mean, I'm not really against the one twenty-five, seeing the schedule. I mean, I don't see how it even really comes into play. I might be not thinking about it correctly.
Could have come into play, but I agree with you.
I guess if you don't end up paving at all.
Well, is, he's going, I mean, it was going to happen, like, he's probably going to stop until he gets that check, right? So if it takes-
So you're saying that, you're saying that paving won't be done really until the twenty-sixth of September?
I'm saying that if somebody is supposed to get paid a hundred thousand dollars before they lay out another hundred?
No, what he was saying is he wants it to go down to one twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-five, if everything's substantially completed besides the paving. That's what you said, right?
Yes, I'm asking for a hundred and twenty-five percent.
So technically, if they does everything besides eighty-eight thousand dollars of paving and it's looking good, that's, he wants it down to one twenty-five.
Of the eighty-eight, plus whatever's left.
Maybe you're saying one twenty-five, we're going to love everything.
We would release the other stuff.
We would have really, we would have, well-
Most of it, yeah.
Yeah.
So you'd be holding eighty-eight times one by two fives, basically what you'd be holding?
Yes, yeah.
Because what, the pay, top coat hasn't been done, you'd be only one by two five times that.
Plus substantial completion on everything.
Yeah, and plus if there's anything that hasn't been-
Substantial, this was anything linear.
Yeah, so obviously if stuff hasn't been done, we're not going to release it.
Right.
So if you use round numbers, if it's a hundred thousand dollars worth of work-
You hold a hundred and twenty.
You're holding a hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah.
What he's at, why he's asking that is because he can pay the contractor in progress payment higher than if you hold a hundred and fifty percent.
Which was the sub one.
Which would be a hundred and fifty percent.
The contractor gets paid more and now he's going to pave the road and wait until the final-
And, yeah, when Eric said that this might not come into play, I just want to probably, most contractors, what they're going to do is they're going to get to that point right before pavement and they're going to wait until they get the check. Because he prob-, for two reasons. To avoid risk during two hundred thousand dollars worth of work without any money, which is very normal, and also he probably needs the money to buy the pavement.
Yes.
Because the other work he's doing- Because the other work he's doing with his own people and his own equipment, but then he's gonna have to go out and lay out money for the pavement.
I mean, but you keep saying substantially complete, so basically everything on this list is gonna be done by.
Substantial completion is a, it's an industry term, it's, it's, it's a capital S, capital C, it means.
Maybe like eighty percent of it, ninety percent of it.
So we would only release ninety percent of it, so whatever the substantial completion is, if Fred says, this is all ninety percent complete. So it's close, basically, an industry term to be substantially complete, we'd release ninety percent or whatever that equated. We'd still keep the ten percent because that hasn't been subs- that hasn't been completed.
But the, the one fifty would drop to one twenty-five.
The one point five would drop to one point two five.
Of everything that we're, that's left.
Of everything, yeah.
Of everything that's left, yeah, so it would be above the eighty-eight, so whatever's left.
So if it was like a hundred thousand, like you were saying, instead of holding a hundred and fifty thousand, we would hold a hundred and forty thousand?
Yeah, no, I mean, I get that.
I mean, I think I'm a fair enough.
Well, do we have to decide that now?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause he's got a sign, like contractors.
Yeah, he's got contractors that wanna go.
They, in order for that.
When's the next meeting?
That's not the eleventh.
That's September.
Yeah.
But I have work to do before that.
Yeah, but we're not releasing any money tonight, no, no.
No, 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 but I, I'd like to get the work started in.
The verbiage of a hundred and twenty-five from one fifteen.
That is okay to do that.
Yeah, cause the work that precedes has to get done and get going.
It's a lot of good faith effort you're asking for us here.
Um, I agree with you, but hopefully I'm not asking for anything that is.
I mean, you, so, but you're, you're committing to substantially complete most of this work by our next meeting?
The twenty-fifth.
No, no.
Why, no, why the, our next meeting?
Because the contractor can't start until the fifteenth.
September fifteenth.
Yeah, no, so we've gotta complete this work before that, right?
Yeah, but are you gonna be, yeah, you're gonna be asking for a partial?
I mean, you need, you need money on the eleventh, yeah.
No, no, I'm not asking for anything like what you're talking.
You're asking to pay your contractor.
How are you gonna, it doesn't make sense what you're asking for then.
But his contractor's not.
I don't even know what subject you're going to.
Yeah.
All I'm asking for is when we get substantial completion on all the work.
Yeah.
And topcoat is done, dropped.
Just stop for a second here, because. On the eleventh, right, if you're not asking for money back on the eleventh, the guy's gonna be done before our next meeting.
He, he's not gonna start unless my work's done, so if my work isn't done, he may get pushed from the fifteenth to the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so the fifteenth is, is, that's, well, it's not a real date then, basically.
It's a party date. Well, it's a real date, it's just.
I, I realize it's the fifteenth is the date that exists.
It may not be associated with the evening at the same meeting.
Don't, I, I said before, don't think of the fifteenth like.
A sandstone.
But, but if, but if he paves anywhere between the fifteenth and the twenty-fifth, you're not gonna have your money that you want.
Which is what he, that's what he said, cause I mean, he's not gonna start till the twenty-fifth.
I'm saying.
Well, that's, I agree with you. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure he's gonna want the check.
Yeah.
I would, I'm sure you, any, anybody you would want.
Okay, well, we, we were just confused because you, we thought it was gonna happen on the fifteenth, and that's why we were saying it doesn't matter. That's why I said it didn't matter, because if he's gonna do it on the fifteenth, yeah.
Oh, 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 I, I, we were.
It would, it would've been a moot point, but what you're saying is it would be till after the twenty-fifth.
The work would commence, and we get to the point where.
Yeah.
The percentage is supposed to drop.
Yeah.
Where then I'm gonna ask Fred to do a bond estimate.
Yeah.
Assuming everything, you know.
On the twenty-fifth.
He would approve it, and then you guys would release the money.
Yeah.
The guy gets a check.
Yeah.
Then he'd probably line up the pavement to be done at that point.
Somewhere in October or something.
The top coat, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Somewhere in October, bro.
I mean, you know, maybe he'll get more comfortable, you know, the money is sitting with the town.
The eleventh, he might come in and ask for money, but probably not. Probably the twenty-fifth is the earliest you're gonna come in looking for bond reduction.
And I don't know, I'm like, I'm gonna, as soon as the work's done, and as soon as they, I mean, I don't know if we'll be open to having a, um, you know, I could request a special meeting in the morning, but always.
We're two in September, that's enough.
Yeah. What?
We have two in September, that's enough.
So.
Um, and so all this is predicated on Fred being able to go out and inspect everything?
Fred's there when we do this work anyway, yeah.
Is, is he good on funds?
No, and I, we talked about that prior to the meeting.
So that, I mean, I think that's a huge thing here, you've, you've gotta be, if you want a good faith effort.
Oh, I know I have to do that.
That money needs to go in, I think, before we do, before we agree to it.
Well, um, I don't know if you really wanna hold up the entire work over twenty-five hundred dollars, I could certainly get the twenty-five hundred dollars in.
We could, we could do conditional, yeah, conditional, and that's what I'm saying, though, right? We could put it as a conditional.
I like that thing as a condition, yeah, yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just, I just wanna be clear though, it's more that twenty-five hundred dollars will get you even, so it'll need to be more than that.
Okay.
So what, five thousand?
That's typically what we've been requesting, maybe.
So twenty-five plus twenty-five?
Well, no, I was, I was gonna say seventy-five hundred because.
Or two, five thousand on top of the turn. Okay.
Um, there's quite a bit for him to review out there, so I don't wanna keep falling short.
So conditional on seventy-five hundred? All right, so we got, what we got here? So we've.
Money holding for the winter, twenty thousand, plus the bond.
Yeah, twenty thousand.
Plus insurance.
Plus insurance, insurance policy.
Insurance, yeah. And then the bond multiplier, if everything's substant- substantially, capital S, completed. We reduce it to one point two five, the multiplier.
Condition on.
Condition, yeah. Huh?
Everything substantially completed and the top coat not done?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, that's fine, yeah, I, I think we're, we're okay with that.
Not everything is substantially completed, that would include.
Yes, yeah. And then conditional upon seventy-five hundred being paid.
Yep, I'm good with all that.
For Fred Hanway services.
Any other thoughts, opinions about those?
Are we in disagreement about numbers that we're using?
We're gonna go with Fred's numbers.
Okay.
Just to be clear to you, Fred, your, when you do your bond estimate, it is not taken into consideration prevailing wage, right? That's with the markup? I just want, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
It's, um, no, it's not prevailing wage, it's based on.
Okay. The means, ours means, our means, yeah.
Yeah, unless, unless there's an argument against it, I'm, you know, just go with Fred's numbers.
Good with this numbers.
Yeah. All righty, are we good to make a vote then, if nobody else has anything else to say?
You wanna break this into several motions? Let's see what kind of word you.
Sure, I will make a motion to approve the insurance policy.
Just, can we go slow, just I wanna make sure I get the.
Sure.
Yeah, that's what.
I don't think.
That's what I'm bringing up to that, isn't it?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the insurance policy by Acadia Insurance as late, the latest revision received.
With the additional loss payee needs to be added.
Oh, with the addition of adding the town of Bolton as a lost payee. That was the addition, sorry.
Second, sir.
On favor?
I have it.
Post?
I will make a motion to allow, instead of ten percent of the total bond reduction to be held over the winter, to allow that to be reduced to twenty thousand dollars in addition to the insurance policy, um, that was provided, to be held, once it is a hundred percent complete over the winter.
Do we owe the board a second?
Until road acceptance.
Do we need to put, like, do we need to say for what, or just, just in general?
It's just for that entire work, for when the work is a hundred percent complete prior to road acceptance.
Okay, sounds good.
Now, second.
On favor?
I.
Post?
Last but not least, um, make a motion to allow when the project is substantially done, minus the top coat, that the multiplier can be reduced from one point five percent to one point two five percent.
Times.
What's that?
Times.
Times?
Not percent.
Oh.
Not one point two five percent.
Sorry, yeah. One point two five, yeah, multiply, one point two five.
Okay.
Should we just say?
Our hundred and twenty-five percent.
Conditioned on.
Oh, okay, conditioned on receipt of seventy-five hundred for Fred and Hanway's fees and.
But substantial, who determines, who's determined the substantial.
Well, that's already in our normal city, that's already established, we don't have to, no, that's already known, that's done by Fred.
Fred does, that's already. We don't, we don't have to say it, okay.
That's already known, that's done by Fred.
One second, on favor?
I.
Hi.
Post? All right, Andy, run.
Right.
Good night.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Almost there.
Thank you.
Take your lunch.
Mark, did you set that up again, that last?
Yeah, reluctantly.
Okay.
I think it's very bad precedent, I wanna get the project, so.
Yes, I agree.
I just, I, I also just, it'd be bothersome just knowing that I was sitting there, I don't know.
You lot just want this too, they were on board.
No, I know, so.
They don't want anything holding up.
One point five seems, everyone says one point five is higher than other towns, is that true?
I don't know.
Do you know?
Um, I don't know what towns usually holds, no.
Seven to eleven, one five.
Yeah.
Seven about any multiplier.
I mean, by law, it's up to one point five, right?
I thought it was at, I thought it was one point five, not up to.
Not up to. I don't know, whatever.
Next. All right, one forty-seven Long Hill Road. Okay, and replacing it's hope. What's going on?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Attorney Kevin Erickson, with good night, Mr. Walter Erickson from the best. Just give you a quick update as to what's happened since the last meeting. You'll recall that at the last meeting, the majority of the work that we were slated to do per our May twenty-second action item list was completed. We did have a few items that were raised at that time by Fred, including the cleaning of the stormwater management system, the digging of the additional trench in some stone area, as well as the issue pertaining to the drainage manhole and the concrete collar. So, um, since that time, we have installed the concrete collar, that was done in the presence of Mr. Hanway. We did also repave over that area using the infrared process that Fred had requested, so that's been done as well. We went out there yesterday for sidewalk, I think it was productive, we were able to count shrubs and trees. We had fifteen trees, which is one more than required under the, on the plans. We, we thought we had enough shrubs, but our actual count on, on site was about, I think it was ninety-four. So, we agreed to put more shrubs out there, um, which we were able to do today, Walter was able to get out there today and put, it's actually now, I believe, a hundred and nine shrubs out there with the requirement being a hundred and five. So, um, we've maintained that grassy area, the seeded area, since the last meeting too. We have voted twice, I don't think we discussed that per se, but we did, we did do it as recently as August twelfth. And I know that Fred has been going back and forth with Ducharme on the final asbills, but those should be getting pretty close to complete, yeah, if not complete, I think that should be the most recent one, I don't.
The thirty-first?
It's two thousand, oh, there we, I was like, it's two thousand fourteen. Oh, yeah, July thirty-first, is that the?
That's the latest.
That's the latest, is that?
That's the latest.
Yes.
So what I did.
I have two copies if anyone's missing.
What I did was for tonight, I did put together, we were sent by Erica, comments from Fred, um, from three different emails. So what I did was, consistent with the last format, I did put together a response where the, the black comments are from Fred's emails and then below our response update. You know, from our perspective, I think, you know, we're there. I know there's, there's still a couple of items that Fred had raised. I, I try to, you know, put our position there relatively clearly, but we can go over it to here tonight. Our, our goal is to be here one more time, asking for a bond release.
Quote again.
I did.
What's that?
I've been quoted plenty of times, it's not so bad.
No, I was looking through, I see that I've quoted.
Well, it's only, I needed to get context and I actually went back.
Public records, it's fine.
That's right.
Um, yeah, I guess let's, just go through this. So Fred, this, this email here, for the five items, this is your main list of what you feel.
What date is that?
August thirteenth.
Thirteenth, Tuesday.
I don't have that.
This one?
You get it, it's whole company? I sent that to you and Erica?
Oh. So I, I guess, so we have this big, huge document.
I don't think, yeah, let's go through Fred's then, cause my document probably addresses those and I can just refer you to the section.
Well, so what I was gonna say, Fred, is besides these five things, you feel like everything else in this document is covered, is completed? Besides these five things? Is that my understanding?
Correct, except the, just two things I asked, well, I'm doing a separate email yesterday, so I just some verification.
Is that?
Our gas slips in the bill for the infrared.
In the, in the drain, drain flush cleaning.
And I'll be getting.
But as far as the plan goes, as far as the work, um, these items just.
Just like trying to determine the best way to go through this, if we spend our time going through every single item, or we just focus on these five items?
Does that make sense, if you just focus on the five?
I think we go for these five items.
I would agree with that, cause the, the bulkiest sections of mine are dealing with these items anyway. And most of these are just, there's an exhibit here that's a previous letter, so it's not as long as it seems, but let's go through Fred's.
Yeah. Yeah, you can reference the document.
Yeah, of course.
So the first forty feet of the driveway is profile slope of eight percent, less than four percent is required, right?
So this is, this is what I touch on in my item, um, on the July twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen email, which is the third page of my letter, where you're quoting, Mr. Chairman. So this is where we, where we talk about, um, where I just refer the board back, just as a, as a reminder that we actually, this was an issue that actually came up after the first asbills, and we did discuss it at the time, um, because my, my memory just needed to be checked. I remember discussing that because it's an upward approach on the driveway, um, you're already decelerating, so from a safety issue, there wasn't the concern there, um, we also talked a little bit about what it would mean.
Yeah, cause this comes, you're coming up.
You're coming up to it.
Versus coming down to it, right?
Right, so from, from our perspective, um, you know, it functions, it serves the purpose for, um, from a safety standpoint. We, we did meet out on site and, um, well, we shot it ourselves, and we're gonna have Ducharme and Dillis take another look at it. We actually think that first forty feet right from the roadway, um, is not as steep as eight percent. We think it's closer to five percent, we're gonna look at that, but.
There was only a two point one four foot difference in the forty feet, which turned out to be a five point three percent. I think Ducharme and Dillis on a thirty scale, when they laid it out and everything, it might look like a eight percent if they go further back, so we're gonna just have them check it and prepare it more detail.
You can just, yeah, do so, some spot shots, a bunch of different spot shots, and then provide a plan and a budget. So, actually, sorry, before we just continue, um, this is the latest asbill from July thirty-first, so is it going to be updated or is it done, done? I'm just.
I wouldn't, I don't know that that needs to be.
I think it would be better for them just to, like you said, spot shots and a little.
Just do a small sketch, okay, so they would issue just a small sketch, showing just that area, leave the, go as is, okay.
So many words, yeah.
What, so many words? Come on, this process has been very long, it's worthy of some words. So I, I guess here's the, here's the summary, the point, uh, the points that I wanted to make. Number one, we talked about the safety and, and we think that that's, you know, mitigated from the fact that it's an uphill approach. We talked about the, what do we take to actually resolve it at this point from a work standpoint, it'd be very disruptive. And I don't think there was an appetite from either the board or the folks who were here to dig back the hundred plus feet. You'd be sacrificing a more gradual slope further back too, because you're gonna have to make up that distance. And it has been in operation for, you know, now three years, since we've been residents there.
And Erica, we haven't received any issues from the residents there with regard to the slope coming out in that driveway, right? This is just a design? This is just a design, obviously designed, I don't think that Fred was bringing up, but.
Right, not since it was identified on the ASBIL and by Fred. It's been more recent emails from them, but prior to that, no. They were, I don't think they were aware of the issue.
So in the more recent emails from them, what would the?
It's in your packet, actually, and I gave, um, it's from today, I gave a copy to Walter now.
Do you have an extra one?
You can have mine.
No, good, I'll take it after. Go ahead, use it, I'll take it after.
It's just, um, from, the email from Kevin Salon, number one.
Where am I looking at?
This is the email from today, from Kevin.
No, that packet is not, that's Kevin's packet.
Here, I, I know for the most part.
He just says he's concerned, it isn't.
Yeah, it's just, it looks like just a generic statement that. I checked my records and my notes, and going back to previous meetings, it's not been raised. And we, except for when we discussed it on the, the, uh, the May, at the May 8th meeting.
So I think if you can provide us with a sketch of some, show us some more detailed spot shots around here, we can.
Yeah.
See that it's less than eight, maybe it is more closer to five, that would be, I think.
Well, what if it is eight? I mean, we've gotta make a decision about how we want to handle it.
Do we have to make a decision until we see that?
I don't know, I'm just putting it out there for.
I think, maybe I just jump in, I think you have, you want to make a decision so it isn't something that is brought up and has to be changed come September, we have a meeting. If you, let's just say they corrected 5%.
Okay.
Are you gonna accept that, that should be decided tonight, right?
Well, so, 5% is more along the lines of being de minimis, which is what you used as your reasoning in here. 8% is not de minimis, that's a definite change, so I guess, um.
Well, I guess, and I want to be a little bit more clear with, with my position, is that it's, we, we think it's more than 5%. I don't think my position on it changes, I still don't think, you know, when we discussed it, I think that that was the consensus, that the, the fix here is not worth, you know, what in reality is really a.
Turning it up and.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's functioning now, it's a, it's, if it's 8%, then it's a, it's definitely a technical deviation, but it's not impacting the, the driveway. And, uh, I think the, the resolution, um, you know, is not gonna be, it's not gonna be worthwhile.
And if you go out there and you drive it, you know, if you get out and you physically see it, there is a leveling area and you, it provides good visibility both sides.
So, yeah, I mean, that's, so this picture here, I guess, really is, is showing it, so where is, this is the stretch, like basically here to here, we're talking, that's an 8%?
No, that's more than 40 feet.
That's more than 40. See where the, uh, where's the front of the, I'm sorry, let me see if I can find.
Isn't this along, along Long Hill there?
Yes.
Pictures is, yeah.
And this is like a car basically as it would.
Yeah.
Egress onto Long Hill.
Correct. And you can see it a little bit here, see how it, it does level off up at the top, there's no car there for reference. But, I'm sorry. Those pictures, these pictures are a little clearer.
Gotcha, okay.
But yeah, so that's the entrance of Long Hill, it does level off there, and, you know, I've driven it a, a great number of times in the Panacola, never had an issue with it, so. I know my own personal driver coming right off of Long Hill Road comes up at a much steeper incline than that, so. So, and we are looking for some clarity from the board on that, because, you know, moving forward, I think, you know, again, I thought it was resolved and because we had talked about it previously, um, I understand that no, you know, it wasn't necessarily voted on that was resolved, and I understand why Fred has, has kept it in his notes, I do, because it's still showing it as a deviation for him.
That's what I'm saying, it should be decided tonight, whether, my, whether uptake percent is okay, just in case it stays that way, or up to 5.3, or up to 6, or up to whatever, so that come, so it can be checked, determined what it is and changed if need be before September. You know, I come in September and say, no, it's not, not gonna be acceptable.
So what are the concerns if it is 8%?
What other concerns? Concerns are, it's first of all, it'll make your regulations, that's what it's at.
Yep.
My, I always have an issue on setting precedence, because that's, that's my problem. What's the issue? As I said before, and basically Kevin quoted me, uh, into that diagonal objection of what he said, and he said it's different than what I stated. It's going up the hill, if it was coming down, I'd have more concern than in the wintertime, they can't.
Slide it.
Yeah, they're not gonna know, stop. And, but it's coming up the hill.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't understand, if it's going uphill onto the road, why it's a concern.
I'm not saying it's a concern.
I'm just saying, I don't understand why.
Right, and that's what we said last, last meeting, or whatever meeting that Kevin's quoting, but it was never, it was, everything was talked about that it seems like it's okay, but it wasn't decided it's okay. So I think it should be decided one way or the other tonight.
Is there a concern coming from Long Hill onto the driveway?
No.
A steep 4%?
It's really the approach going from the site to the.
Cause you're stopped, yeah, yeah.
And even on, uh, even on an incline coming up to get going again, you stop, but it's, but it's, it's, I haven't seen a problem. I haven't been out there in mid-winter by any means, but, um, there hasn't been, my understanding, to recently, just the, the general statement that the residents are concerned, right?
No, not, like I said, not, and so there's some.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if it, if it just says they're concerned about it, no, nothing specific.
Right.
The deviation from the plan.
And there's a good chance it's less than the 8%.
So, and you say to fix it, I mean, substantial, I mean, you'd have to go back a ways.
If, if it comes down to 8%, as you use example, and it's supposed to be a four, you've gotta come in at that and fill that, at a certain point, fill it two feet. First of all, take out the pavement from Long Hill Road as a minimum, maybe 100 feet and maybe more.
Yeah.
And fill that and grade it, and it's not just a matter of going to 100 feet, you gotta blend it into what exists further down into the driveway, so you're chasing.
I mean, I do remember when we talked about the cross slope and stuff like that, we're fixing that, and the appetite, like you said, from the residents was not, you know, not to touch. They, they were not interested in redoing the whole driveway, it was my recollection.
Where does the 8% come from? It's just a matter of.
That's from the ASBIL plan.
Yeah, they just did the percentage, it's the.
Yeah, where is it?
The contours on the ASBIL plan.
No, it's supposed to be less than 4%.
4%.
Our regulations say it's supposed to be less than 4%.
So it's from us, okay.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, yeah, the 4% is from you.
Yeah.
8% is from you.
I guess I'll stick with my quote, yeah, it doesn't seem necessary. This doesn't sound like me.
In real time, it sounds much better.
Yeah.
My main concern is along with what Fred brought up, is, um, you know, allowing this for this site, but not letting it be a precedent. How is that?
So my, my response to the precedent, which I, we, we do get that a lot, right, in, in my line of work, and two things. One, these type of issues are dealt with always on a case-by-case basis by the board. And they're doing it with information from Fred, our engineers, the applicant and us, and your own analysis on each case. For example, this one comes up, the amount of work that would need to be done here, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Number two, boards, and I, I always am careful the way I say this, because I think some boards get offended, boards can't set precedent. Only courts can set precedent. Boards, you guys are in the lucky position where you can make one decision one time, and another decision another time, it's up to someone to appeal you, and if you're not adhering to your regulations, then, you know, that's at the board's risk. But otherwise, boards don't set precedents, and that's why we don't cite special permit decisions when we make an application for a special permit, or variance decisions, when we make an application for a variance. So, it can't be, it can't be done legally, set precedent, and from a appearance standpoint, the answer is always, this is a case-by-case issue.
I think it's a case-by-case.
Oh, no, I know that, I mean, this is specific to this case, I just always, like you say, wanna have it in the back of your mind of, trying to be as consistent as we can with the projects and our decisions, as much as we can.
Okay, so let's move on.
Yeah. Plantings, plants are labeled, plant tree, typical two tables. Two tables.
So why?
Just that I'm clear, the board is fine with the, the current state of the project.
Well, we get to vote on it. But do we want them to, do you want Ducharme and Dillis to go out and get the actual?
Absolutely, yes, I would.
We'll still do that, I just wanted clarification that even if it's up to the 8%, that the board's still comfortable with that point. We expect it to be better, but if it's not, I think the argument like I was making still stands.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the ASBIL should note, note the, you know, the actual, right?
Well, it's not gonna, the, the ASBIL currently has shown is knowing 8%, what's gonna be provided is supplemental sketch with additional spot shots within the 40 feet.
Right.
To confirm if it really is 8% or less.
Right.
Um, so we'll get that, we'll receive it, and it can be documented, whatever percentage then it is, um.
My, my opinion is, whether they do make a sketch which would be putting it on that plan and then taking a block, an eight and a half by 11 block and printing it, they might as well have the plan printed.
You mean the ASBIL?
The ASBIL plan. There's no, you need to have it as a eight and a half by 11 sketch.
Oh, I see, okay.
Because they're gonna have to change it on that plan and then just block out that eight and a half by 11 portion and print it as a sketch.
I still want.
So the ASBIL plan should be correct, whether it's 8, 5, 4, or whatever.
They can resubmit the ASBIL plan, I just want a, I mean.
So you can see.
I wanna blow up plan that we can see, in this area specifically, knowing the first 40 feet, so that it's.
It's not even a blow up, it's, right now, those contours, whether it's, it's 100 scale or whatever, that's what it shows, the contours are wrong, are, according to what Walter shot today, yesterday, whatever. The contours are, are wrong, the contours could be right and Walter could be wrong. They're just showing the spot grades, if they, if they're correct, those contours, there're gonna be spot grades in between those contour lines.
Yeah, well, most likely, they just didn't take enough spot shots and they just.
Oh, it's almost, I don't know how they didn't, it's, it's, uh.
Did they, what, they took a ton?
They got three, they got three feet of range there in 40 feet, the first three feet of contour lines, those are wonderful contours.
Well, you have to look at the, you have to look at the surface of what they, how many points, it's really based up on how many points they, with the survey.
Well, then, we'll be, we'll do, we'll do it on a, on a section and then we'll have them on the.
It should be on the plan.
Okay.
So I'm saying it should be on the plan.
I, I.
That's what gets them in essentially.
I, I painted the spots on the road, it was, it was 5 feet, it was 2.14 feet, so I, I think we're.
So a sketch and everybody's ASBIL will be submitted?
Yes.
All right, number two, planting, so what's in question?
So Fred, Fred knows the count from yesterday on the shrubs, um, and I, before, Fred wasn't aware until I sent the email late that, um, that Walter had put in the additional shrubs. So, we're at 109 shrubs now, um, we're at 15 total trees, um, and then, you know, the issue becomes height and caliber. And one thing I noted in my, um, letter that was kind of recent, um, when we looked at the, the species of shrubs and the notations on the plans, 35 of these shrubs are lowbush, uh, blueberries, they don't grow over two feet, so there's a, Ducharme and Dillis must have had an incorrect notation on the plan when they said that they'd be three to four feet, um, in height, they just don't grow that, if you look at the specification sheets that I provided. So, that doesn't account for necessarily all of the shrubs that are under height, but the vast majority, and I think Fred and Erica were, were there when we went over this too, but the vast majority of the shrubs that aren't the proper height are, um, shrubs that have been there for more than two years at this point. So they're established, um, healthy shrubs. And you'll recall in my May 22nd action item list, one thing I did say was if we were deficient on trees and shrubs, we were gonna plant new ones, but that we weren't gonna rip out healthy trees or healthy shrubs and just throw them away just to, um, to reach the, the height. Because again, that is a require, it's, it's a notation on the plan, so I don't dis, again, I don't disagree with Fred pointing it out. It's not in your regulations, it's not a regulatory thing. In fact, your regulations don't even speak to landscaping at all, so it's a, it is, again, that's a, that is a true technical plan deficiency, and it's, it's not even with, um, I wouldn't say the majority of the shrubs out there, so. That's a long way of saying we're not proposing anything further as it pertains to the trees and the shrubs, and we wanted the board's input on that as well.
So, sorry, before I answered that, do we just need, Fred, do you need to go out there just to confirm the 109 total?
Sure.
Okay, so, will you, will you do that before or next meeting, I guess, is that when?
So we, we counted them the other day.
Yesterday.
When we were out there.
Yeah.
And, um, we missed five that were in front of your count, cause you parked off from that.
Yeah, I think you guys were doing that as I was standing up away.
So we missed five that were in front of your count, because we counted everything behind.
Yeah.
And then I added 11 today. So that's how we got to the 109.
No, that's fine.
I can take a picture of that, or you can just, you see the 11 that we put in, so. But we counted the rest, the three of us, Fred and I.
Can't take a question, I would assume the board should be going, have it ready for the next meeting, while we're checking whatever ASBIL changes, they might get it.
Okay.
And I, and I put them on in the same spot, made that first attention again. You could, so you can see, and I'll show them, send the picture.
Give an invoice, give an invoice.
I do.
So we can give the invoice to Eric also?
So the open questions is that, one of the oaks should be two inch, should be two inch caliber and it's not, is that?
No, all oaks.
Four one-inch oaks. Oh, there's four one-inch oaks, so it should be two inch caliber.
Oh, I see, okay, so this, and then there's two one-inch maples, should be four dogwoods, okay, so they're just, they're different species?
Yeah, we did add a dogwood since this was done, because this only counts 12 trees. We counted, we have 15 not on site now. Some of them, when they, when they went in two years ago, probably nursery substitutions and, and, you know, it's not atypical.
So all the trees that are in, are they established, or when's the last time they were planted? I know the shrubs you just planted today.
We planted some new trees, but, um, the majority of the trees are, were established. How many new trees have we planted?
We planted four.
But that was, um, six plus months ago, no, last fall?
No, this spring, spring, we did that attention again.
Right after the May 22nd letter.
And along that new soil.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the rest of them are old, so 11 of them would be, would be established two plus years, I would think, and then the others, the other four are newer.
I mean, what's a one-inch oak, what's a two-inch oak, you know, what's the, uh, cost difference, you know, longevity difference?
Some of those smaller, uh, caliber trees have been doing well, they've been, I'm sorry, Fred, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, good.
Said, you know, but some of the smaller caliber trees, I think the majority of the ones that are undersized are the ones that have been there for, for two plus years. They're the proper height, to be honest with you, sometimes you can't find the two-inch, that, that could have been the issue back, back when it's done.
I mean, uh, trees of small, small sizes are planted and grow. Trees of bigger sizes are planted and don't grow. It says, it's, it's landscape, um, they have been there for a while, except for the last four this spring.
I mean, if they're, if they're established, then.
Yeah, okay.
You'll check on 109?
Yep.
I don't think we need to talk about this anymore, unless somebody else has something. Turnouts. Supposed to be 25 by 18. Looks like you have a bunch of close but not quite there turnouts. Is, is the, the base of the turnout, does it extend further? I mean, could you add a little more top coat, or is the turnout just gravel, I forget?
No, turnout's baited, then it's the bait, the binder and finish cost, there is no, that is the.
There is no.
There is no binder beyond that can be top coated.
Then there is, there is binder in it, you can't just top coat, for the grass, you'd have to dig up.
Right, he's asking if there's binder that wasn't got top coated, no, it, all the.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if that was the 25 by 18, but the top coat didn't reach.
Um, were these turnouts, like, requirements at all by the fire department or anything like that?
They're in your regulations.
So they're, but they're for. So they're, but they're for just?
For emergency vehicles and for the power. One hundred percent for emergency vehicles, 'cause you wanna make sure that that can be done for that cars, it's an inconvenience, they're homeowners, but it's there for the homeowners too.
It needs to be a turnout every, within every three hundred feet there.
Yes, so I guess my only question with regard to this is, you know, I mean, I think the residents, the, these are, you know, the fact that they're a little smaller isn't great, but it's close. But is there concern with us accepting this with regard to the, um, fire department? Or, or police, or, I just didn't, I didn't know if they're, if they.
Bottom line is fire, emergency vehicle's gonna go over there.
They're gonna, yeah.
Wherever they find easiest to go, if it's twenty feet before the turnout to go up on the grass, then they're gonna do that. Um, if it's the driveway, there's a horseshoe driveway in the existing home. If it's easy to pull in there, they're gonna do that.
Yeah.
I mean, on spur, I say spur of the moment, the decision made.
Yeah.
Not looking, okay, there it is up there and it looks like it's the right size, they're, they're, they're gonna.
So, I mean, the first one was six feet short.
I mean, yeah. It's really the first one, the other three, okay, I mean.
That does have, to give the benefit of the doubt, that that one does have curbing, so it is another two feet longer. Yeah, that's the only one that has curbing, with that, 'cause it had curbing coming from, uh, Long Hill Road down to the catch basin.
Do you know which one that is?
Yes, which one?
Yep, right, three hundred.
Where's three hundred? Three twenty-five?
Three twenty-five.
No, it was three hundred.
There's one hundred, two one inch. Oh, I see it, I see it, yeah, I got it, okay.
And, and that's probably why that is showing, or it's because they put the curbing on top of the binder, so.
Instead of like, they should.
Yeah.
No, they should've made the binder.
So they should've made it burn.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a Cape Cod burn, and so.
Yeah.
They just put it.
And the Cape Cod burn is wide.
No.
Usually a long.
It wasn't taken into account when they put in the binder properly, that there's gonna be curb on top of it.
But it still would've been four feet short.
Yeah, yeah.
So is, is, does the plan show twenty-five by eighteen, I said?
Yes.
It's that, it's a specific one.
It's all typical. I forget what she showed.
I didn't know if there was one spot where it said this is what the turnout seems to be in, that just points it out, or if for each spot it shows twenty-five.
No, it shows a typical in one spot, all turnouts are twenty-five by eighteen.
Okay, okay, all right, yeah. This is typical.
Right.
In engineering terms, you don't, you don't necessarily get.
That what that means is? No, what that means is, it's labeled once in that same configuration.
They don't have to label it every single.
But I'm just saying in electronics, when I do design, typical isn't, you go by min and max, don't go by typical.
No, no, each, each turnout, each turnout, that's the, each turnout is that size.
Using a lot of.
You don't lay, they don't have five, ten turnouts and label every one of them, they label it once. And that's.
Just saying, the, the term typical is weird to me because that's not, that's, that's all site, site engineering wise.
It's a, it's a common, very common. Very common.
Typical detail.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, yeah, you could typically with that, but it might be something else. That's not I think of it.
No, it isn't meant to, it's another, man, every symbol of that nature, that's what that one, that's, you don't label, you're not labeling everything on the plan.
It just saves.
Every symbol on the plan is, that symbol is typical of the plan.
I mean, it's, so there's not like this binder there, so there's no easy recourse here?
No, there isn't.
You know, and, and, you're right, that first one is, is the one that's kind of sticks out, and again, I guess that curbing does allow for some of the deviation. But again, this is sort of similar to the first forty feet in the sense that this has been functioning for, you know, for some time now.
No, it just means people are gonna drive over the grass more.
And once again, you have, leading up to that, recorded the way to it, you have the horseshoe driver of the existing home there on the other side.
Oh, I see.
So in a sense, there is, a cock can fit in the i-pock, whenever I go there and we're in that vicinity, i-pock in that spot all the time.
Yes.
This picture?
I don't know if that's the one, is that the one? Is that the shorter one that you're talking about?
Yes, yeah, that's Fred's car.
It's the only one that has Jeff.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
That's today, I guess.
Yeah.
Fred's car fits.
I always, I always park there.
Mine.
When, when, when I'm, when I'm in that vicinity, that's where I park.
All right, quarter four. So the new swale, three twenty-five to four, was not constructed to the elevation shown on the sketch. It's not as defined as it should be and there's no defined swell elevation. So are we talking about the swell that was built to prevent water from crossing the road?
Correct, the new swale.
Yeah.
So we tried to reach out to Greg Roy to get, you know, something from DuCharm and Dillis too, about the, uh, as-built conditions of that swale, uh, whether or not they, you know, their opinion as to the adequacy of it as designed, as constructed. Unfortunately, Greg Roy is out this week, so it's something we're gonna have to, um.
Do you address that in the end?
I think I do, yeah, I'm gonna tell you where I put it. I think it's in one of, Fred's later, or it might be a little bit further down. I mean, from our, from our perspective, we, and I know, we said this to Fred and Eric out on site yesterday, we, oh yeah, it's number eight on page, yeah. With the hill function as intended, um, it's, it's gonna collect water, it's gonna bring it down.
Um, I mean, I've seen the pictures, it's not, it's not functioning completely though, there's still water.
Well, I don't know, I guess I did wanna, if, if, if you're gonna bring up those pictures, I.
I should just give, forget about the actual functionality of the other, this is, this is the swale, you know, the area that's well. Made down through here. If you look at, this is the swale that existed, that was in the original design plans further up the road, you can see the swale in there. And there is no swale, so to speak, in this facility. The actual sketch that Ducharme submitted shows defined swells, you can see this is three fifty-nine, that's three fifty-eight, it's a foot lower, it's a foot lower, the the as-built plan of that area is, um, I'm trying to this way to go in line with that sketch. Okay, they, you can see the contour has a little bit of shape back here. And then this contour is straight across, and these don't go back, there's not the defined, you understand a little more, they should come back into the other one, so there's a foot, foot lower.
Basically, it goes deep and it floods up.
What's that?
Basically, it starts deep and it floods up.
No, it doesn't, no, it's a flat, flat, it, it's supposed to be deep and it isn't.
Okay.
When I say deep, a foot deep, there's no, you can see from the picture there, it's, there's a, you can see a swell.
Yeah.
It's not, um, much. Uh, Walter even said, it looks like it's four to eight inches, I'm, I'm, sorry, six to eight inches deep.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
And I think it's even lot, lot less than that. According to this, as you get down near the end where this water is seeping across, there is no swell in here, so to speak.
It needs to be thorough.
I mean, it is.
And, and I guess my question is, can it be dug more and brought around?
Yes, because these, even these contours can be brought back to feed into that side, so.
Yeah, well, plus, this is steep slope, the grade from here to here is pretty good. So even though it's not a foot deep, it's going this way, so it's.
No, I, I'm, I'm less concerned, I'm less concerned with this slope, I'm concerned with the fact that it gets, it gets flakier.
But over here, it looks like. You get it there.
Yeah, no, you could.
Because what that means is then it can just go across the road and now it's not going to be so.
Which is what it's not.
No, you, you could dig it deeper.
Yeah.
What, what I'd like to do, if you don't mind, is I, I wanted to look at it during the rain event.
Yeah.
And I wanted to take DuCharm and Dillis out there, and if they're uncomfortable with it, we'll dig it deeper, we'll dig it again.
Here it is right here, here's the detention basin.
Yeah.
And there is no swell, here's the catch basin, which is here and here.
So, so this is, so where's, this is the detention basin?
So that's three fifty-nine.
For this vicinity.
Okay.
Here's the catch basin, right there and there, and there is no, as we're used to seeing, as we're used to building, there is no defined swell.
Yeah, well, it's right there, yeah. But there's no, this is, I mean, this is all clear, so there's no landscaping, I thought I was.
No, it's just, it's just grass.
It's just getting out here.
Okay.
But, but, uh, um, to the side of the swell.
It's hard to, it's hard to see in the pictures anyway, because they go behind this pole, yeah.
Yeah, see, this doesn't show. Yeah, here it is, here's the picture, I'm sorry.
Is, is it this one, is this the same one we're, this one?
Yes, it is, and, and here it is right here.
So where this water is crossing, where is that on this picture? They're showing.
On this picture?
This is, it's all beyond the pole is where this swale should be, right, and so the water's crossing.
But the basin's like right, right up here, right?
Yes, yep.
And the water's crossing way down there. You guys are saying, you guys are saying it's flat over here though?
No, it's flat all the way to the pole.
Oh, all the way to the pole.
Yeah.
Where's the pole?
When I say flat, it's.
Oh, that's the pole there, okay, so that's that piece, I mean, so that.
It's flat, not, as Walter said, the grade, it's pi- it's pitching that way, but it's flat this way.
I mean, so it seems pretty clear, that means we dug deeper. Right?
Would be, that would be coming back up, here's the swale they're talking about right here.
I don't think I've seen that picture.
That was a picture I took yesterday.
No, no, not yours, Eric, I'm sorry, the one that's on here.
Oh, that was from the, um.
This is from, who was it? It's the eight fourteen, that's, that's today, right?
Yeah, but that picture's from, that picture's from, an older one, from, I don't remember when.
If there's an older picture.
Oh, okay. Oh, so this could've been before the swell was.
No, that is after the swell, that's after the swell.
Yeah.
Because before it was running down the curve, better or more, because it was coming right across.
All I'm concerned though is, you know, we're relying on our, our analysis on pictures that are sent in by residents, we don't have context on when that was taken and. Yeah, yeah, like, I mean, we get it, but, so we're, we're not gonna make you do a lot of expensive work. No, I understand, so.
What's the.
I'm not being argumentative, I'm, I'm just trying to be an advocate.
Yeah, I understand.
And that's my joke.
But this is, this, that's something that's easily fixable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the landscaper, when he went out there, DuCharm and Dillis had the grade stakes in, said cut one foot, three feet wide.
Yeah.
And I think he cut it in, and then I think he, it's afraid topside will pop, you know? And I think that's why he's not a whole foot deep.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's not a big deal to us, if, if it's, and if they're not comfortable with it, we can.
Okay. Sounds like we're in agreement.
Okay, okay.
Number five, there's still a large amount of areas, spots that are weedy and or bare. So, there's a picture war going on here.
Well, yeah, and, and I actually think, you know, and if I'm being honest, I, I've driven down here a bunch of times over the last year, and I actually think this is a huge improvement to what this looked before, but I also will say this. Um, and most of these, the vast majority of this grass, I think, is taken phenomenally, considering it was planted in June. This is not even a season worth of, of time. The other thing that I would say is that it's important to remember that, you know, grass will need to be maintained over a period of years, uh, even your lawn after it's been hydroseeded, before it starts to look, you know, like it should look. And weeds in July and August are, are gonna be there in New England. Crabgrass in July and August is gonna be there in New England. But it doesn't have to be next spring, if the, the Common Driveway Association, uh, wants it to look, you know, like Pebble Beach, they can do that. It's gonna take a landscaper coming out there and, and caring for this, or, or them caring for it significantly. But otherwise, I think that the requirements, the only requirement on the plan, and I double-checked this again before I came, is lumen seed. We did that, I think, three times now at this point. The only requirement in the bond that you're holding is lumen seed, and we hydroseeded. Uh, you know, Panda went above and beyond with this, and this is not the, the, the first time we reseeded. And I, I don't wanna argue about whether or not we should've or not, and I don't want to, but, you know, at some point, there're gonna be bare spots and there're gonna be weeds, and we can't be perpetually obligated to fix it.
I'm sorry, can you, wait, why is it at some point there's gonna be bare spots and weeds?
Unless they maintain it, there's gonna be bare spots and there's gonna be irrigation system.
Oh, I, I got you, I, I got you.
Fred, are there spots that are particularly worse than others?
I mean, this, I just, I was thinking of this one.
Which one is that?
There are. So that's on the right-hand side when you first come in.
Yeah.
I think it gets more sunlight.
One spot, there's another spot right there, there's.
Yeah.
Well, that, that spot.
There's another spot here.
That spot when you first come in on the right, that, we sent you a picture of all those contractors' trucks that parked on that grass. So, can that, that whole section, they were doing some work on that house. And we sent you some pictures of contractors' trucks that parked off the road and they parked.
Feel free to swipe through if you wanna.
I lost, it shut off, so I couldn't get to it.
Oh, yeah, I know.
I think.
This is another, excuse me, one second.
Yeah, sure.
This is another picture, um, from yesterday. Some of the pictures, when you take a picture of grass along the distance, it's no different than for the number of years, and everybody knows it's going bald. So I look from above, when you stand over it, it's a different thing.
Yeah, but that's true in my land, right, I mean, that's true in my law.
So, there's some pictures that show that are, um, I'm trying to call it that, and it's gonna, it looks that, you stand over it and there's dirt.
I mean, that's kind of why I started this off saying it's a picture war, because it just depends on the angle.
I get it, and, and, but if you look at.
These are your pictures, are they?
Oh, yeah, I mean, so there are spots, there are spots where there's bareness, but I guess what I'm saying, and this is my fundamental argument, our obligation was to lumen seed, and that's why you're holding money. So once we do that, from a legal standpoint, there's no justification to hold the money.
Well, can I, actually, can I take a step there here? I thought the, yes, obviously your obligation is lumen seed, but I thought the, holding the money was to make sure it ta- it took.
No, I have the original tri-party agreement exhibit. And the only reason you were holding money, item number ten, was to lumen seed the shoulders, 'cause it hadn't been done at the time of the last occupancy certificate.
No, but I get, I'm not, I guess I'm not arguing this, that, that I get and that makes sense. What I'm saying is, isn't there, um, like, a contractual agreement of when you lumen seed, it's guaranteed, it's supposed to be guaranteed for a year or something like that?
No. I, I don't, and I think we talked about this before, we, our landscaper doesn't guarantee grass for a year. And I don't know any landscaper that guarantees grass for a year.
I do, I know some.
I, I don't, but, but, but our, again, that's not, we can't amend the tri-party agreement.
No, that's fine, okay, no, I wasn't arguing with that, I, I get what you're saying, Dan, but.
And, and again, we tore up that area in part to fill tire routes that, you know, we didn't really think we should've been doing in the first place. And so, you know, some of this, we'll take a little bit more time now to look like it even did maybe, but, but a lot of these pictures, if you do go through my pictures, and I understand perspective's important, but, you know, these look pretty good. And when you drive down there.
Some are better, yeah, for sure.
And, and, you know, it's.
It's a, it's a maintenance thing.
No, I, I under, yeah, I understand that.
And, and I think.
We're, we're trying to come to the finish here, to agree on certain things, right?
Yeah, I agree. If, if the board members have a chance to drive down here, I think it would be a good thing to do, because we, we have done a lot of work, and it looks, it looks way, way better than it is.
Yeah, I was actually gonna suggest that Walter, that prior to any bond release, um, would the board entertain a site visit prior to closing out this project, to see everything that's been done? Would that be helpful for you, or? If not, you, you know, obviously we don't have to.
Yeah, we could probably just.
I mean, I'll drive down and see if, like.
I'll take a drive down.
But, this, this needs to end.
Yeah.
So can I just?
Like.
Could agree on stuff.
You can't tell you.
I think when we talk about lumen seed too, and I mentioned to this to you as well, Kevin, um, I think one of the key points is that we just wanna make sure that the site is stabilized, that, that material isn't moving, so.
And when you have a lot of bare spots, I get nervous about that.
I mean, but without watering, even if you had four inches of lumen perfect hydroseeding, it's still gonna end up with junk if it's just.
Yeah, but, I mean, this is then turning it over formally to the residents, right?
Yeah. Right.
So what does it, what does it take to hydroseed in a few spots, the worst spots? I don't think it's much more or less expensive, because you're still mobilizing the, the truck out on site. Yeah, and, and again, you know, you know, hydroseeding was sort of like a, we're only gonna do this one more time, we'll do it right, we'll do a good job, we'll hydroseed. You saw the pictures, you know it was hydroseeded, right? There's no way we can go out there and water it, there's no way we can control it. I, I'm not asking. And I, and even if we. We're coming, you are coming to the fall, right, the grass is gonna take better in the fall.
But I think it was also hydroseeded after the June fifteen.
Well, that was again, that was a comment made made by a resident without any citation. And June fifteenth is an arbitrary date. It happens to be my birthday. I love that day. But it's an arbitrary date that might be swell during the hot or it might not be hot and might be rainy.
No, but it's in like the state highway regs that a lot of things have gone that go by for site design, that there's a planting season in the spring and fall.
When is the fall planting season? When does that start?
September first, October fifteenth, I think. And I think it's two months. It's six weeks in the fall. I think it's two months. April fifteenth to June fifteenth in the spring. There's an eight-week and a six-week window.
Here's my ultimate concern. And and, you know, my client's not agreeing to do this, but even if we reseeded with regular sheet, not hydroseed, that bare spot, right? If it doesn't take and the residents send you pictures, what's gonna happen?
Well, I guess no. So yours, yours are the, oh, sorry. I was just gonna say, um, you you did go and you hydroseeded. But the the fact that you hydroseeded a little later this season then would have been acceptable. We are asking, would you be amenable to either hydroseeding or reseeding after September first when we're back into an acceptable timeframe for seeding? And that's giving it, you know, you're giving a second chance. It is what it is at that point. I I don't think we're gonna come back after you.
No, the permit.
We close the permit after that point, right?
I got a quick question. Are we talking about re digging out the swell again?
Yes.
Okay, so once you do that, you gotta reseed it, right?
So that's gonna be.
Yep.
So what's the.
All right, we'll we'll reseed it that way.
And if you could do that after September first, do it during the timeframe of when, you know, it's, you know, typically acceptable. I think we're just asking for one more round. I, we're not gonna be, we're not trying to keep coming after you for this.
Nope.
Okay.
Just do do we need to define the bad spots or?
It's very difficult to.
Well, no.
You know. If if you can work, I would say, Fred, we'll leave it up to you to work with.
We'll probably just take a, you know, spread it and just do the whole thing.
We can oversee the whole thing. Because that honestly, they should do that anyway. Again, this is hopefully something they do on their own. Because I've done it with my lawn. I'm sure you can do it with yours.
Yes. And then can I just go back on the, I just wanna throw this out, see what you guys think. With the one turnout that's six feet short, obviously, I'm not gonna ask to pave it or anything like that. But does it make sense to maybe just put a couple feet on each side of crushed dome that's at the same elevation of the curb? It's still awkward because you'd be going up over curb, but then you're, I'm just thinking, if you're a car and it's short, you're always gonna be going over the grass. So rather than peel the grass, does it make sense to put crushed dome there or, I don't know.
The grass showed was pretty firm, so I think if you had to go over it, it wouldn't be bad.
Okay.
The amount of time directly they go over.
Then they do it, probably makes sense to peel the grass and not jump with the crush. All right. I was just thinking.
We can all drive through our own.
I know where you're going with that.
Yeah, but rather aesthetically, probably peel it with this.
Yeah, I mean, I think if this were a different project, different circumstances, we would have you redo that one, right?
Yeah.
Because it's six feet short. I mean, that's bad.
I was just trying to see it with.
It's a big deviation. It's a big deviation.
Yeah, right. And then on top of the the eight percent, four percent. But I mean, everyone just wants this done. So let's agree on on the things to fix and the things that.
It seems like four and five, we are asking you.
Four and five, four and five.
Overseed and do the, make that swell.
And we do the grade.
Do it out the swell.
And if you're having.
We already had to do Sharpie Dillis with that.
Look at this. I was just gonna say, do you want him just reshoot the grades so we can have it up?
We'll have to do it for the swell.
That's what I was gonna say. That's what I'm saying. Combine both. Do it at once so that you only have to revise it once.
When is September?
September eleventh.
September eleventh?
Twenty fifth.
And the twenty fifth.
Yeah.
So, you know, weather dependent and availability to get in there because we wanna wait till after September one.
Yep.
If if we needed to continue, you know, rather than come in and and continue, we can just send a ladder and we'll push it out to the twenty fifth.
No, that's fine.
Yep.
That's okay.
That's great. Thank you, Walter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Big break.
Okay, thank you.
Mandarin forty seven. I'll I'll see that when I nears that number. East paper number, forty seven.
I'm gonna go back at some point and look at agendas and see how many times it's been on the agenda.
It has to be a record.
I think so.
For common driveway. All right. Paving schedule. Paving, where do you go? What do you do?
You don't wanna know.
Don't ask because you really want the answer.
This meeting is like, like nineteen fifty-five.
We have the whole.
That's right. Kitchen out one is knowledge.
All right, so paving schedule. Discuss the paving schedule that I'm planning with the projects anticipated to pave before. Do you have a document here somewhere?
Yeah, you have an email from me.
Email from.
Okay.
All right, here we go.
Oh, here we go. Paving deadline?
I had discussed with Erica and I wanted to discuss, have to discuss with the board to.
Well, so we're supposed to be done before November fifteenth anyway, so you're staying.
But we've always, always gone the extensions. I'm going the way of the fifteenth. Now, the biggest problem is this. I've got an estimated fifteen days of paving to be done, different, mostly in Bolton and two other towns, two other projects outside of Bolton.
You see other towns, right?
And so it's gonna be, if if Keys wants, if I'll talk and top coat, Andy's gonna do binder, then top coat. His thing alone is probably five days of paving.
Andy's?
Yeah, he's gonna take out binder, do binder, then top coat the whole site.
Well, he's gonna be done by October, so.
Just like all of them. And then they come in without me even telling them that they should ask for an extension. They even even Keys way back said they would need it, would need it.
So you're requesting no extensions this year and that we just notify them ahead of time?
Notify them this week. I'll notify them or Erica can. I don't know who I don't know who should notify them, but um.
I'm following that.
The biggest thing is they can't do them, physically can't do them in the last week.
Because you're not gonna be there. You're not gonna be there. Yeah.
Anyways, I have ten days and only if they're all waiting to do it, the thirteen, fourteen, fifteenth, and that's what's gonna happen. So physically can't do it. Some of them might not even plan on doing it. Up until tonight, you didn't think Andy was going to.
Right, wow.
And we still don't know, but he's more, he's still talking about it.
I know.
If you look at his schedule, his schedule that he's still talking about was April, started April first, when he submitted. He's only one thing been done, and that was done by an outside contractor, not by him. And that's the only thing that's been done since April first.
Yeah.
So he's so he's condensed the schedule now, a five-month schedule into into three or two weeks. If he's talking about September, October, right?
Yeah.
Finish it. So anyways, getting back to it, um, I think three forty-five Long Hill Road, which is John Mecklen's job, will probably be done before that. I think one of the ones in Harvard will be done before it. They're gonna do the binder next week supposedly, and I think they'll be doing the finish in September. But either way, I even just the Bolton jobs, I don't have enough time if they all come in the last week. Never mind, it rains Tuesday. Now it'll push it to Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, whatever the days are. But I don't think there's a reason to give them with now three months notice this week being three months from November
Yeah, yeah.
to give them that they can't plan accordingly. Keith Fong, I've called him every two weeks since April. Two weeks I'm gonna be doing the drain, two weeks I'm gonna be doing the drain. Called him yesterday, now it's September. So it's, um, you know, it's gonna be November.
I have no issue with that.
I love it.
And they'll have to, they'll have to call me and schedule it and try to get it done.
So just thinking ahead now, we're in November, he's gone, someone comes in and says, I want an extension, and we have no one to look at it.
Well, I I won't even let it get to that point. When they come to me, I will say that the board already voted not to allow any extensions this year. I'm sorry, you're gonna have to wait.
Do we even have to vote that?
Okay.
That's really.
Do we even have to vote that? I mean, we have to vote to.
Um, I will just say that the board discussed, maybe vote's the wrong word. The board discussed it.
But I think I want to put in this this note.
Put a formal vote in place. I mean, if we're gonna say we're not gonna entertain extensions this year.
Mainly because our inspector is not gonna be around.
Right.
Right.
Well, I'm only missing one day, so and of course the other, but there's, as far as the official goes, I'm only missing the fifteen. The factory means they, even if they have the fifteen.
No, I mean, you're you're out after the fifteen.
Even if we had the two weeks.
You're out.
Even if I was here.
Oh.
Yeah.
They can't, there's not enough time to get them all done.
Yeah.
Never mind weather spooning it up.
So can you send a letter out to everybody?
I'll send an email to all the contractors, I'll cc Frank.
Do we, should we, or just say that we just.
I think you have to somewhere officially, I would say you would you would officially directed Erica to do that.
Do we need a motion or just?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll move that we do not allow paving extensions.
After, yeah, this year.
After the November, oh, fourteen, November fourteenth will be the last day of paving this year. And we will not, we will not entertain discussion about extensions.
Second.
On favor?
All right.
Okay. Are you going on vacation?
I'm just up to New Hampshire, then I'm going down toward Ireland, to Newport, the last part of the month, which I think is twenty-nine. Just went on a cruise last week, so.
Excellent.
So that's three weeks of vacation.
I got unlimited vacation, but your boss is so good. Oh, I have accrued it over the, that's what, then we get to roll it over.
Okay, great.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna talk to her. What else do you have on your agenda?
Right, of course.
Forty B.
Oh, the forty B.
Forty B.
I wanna go with that contract. Can I grab something?
Oh, wonderful.
A contract.
I have it on my list up to here.
I'll talk to you after you guys, this is a lot.
It could be a while. Do you want to call me tomorrow morning?
Is he part of his way to find commercial properties or that's all that's left in town?
Yeah, I think it's that.
Just hold on, just gonna have a copy.
So where's Farm Road?
Okay, I'll make I'll make a copy of it and then I'll give it to you next time, yeah.
I don't have a contract. I know I never did, nor did I have the terms.
Got it.
So.
But we still need to do that blanking contract, so I will send you my.
Correct. From here on, and I'll just take that back.
Sounds good.
Oh, I know where that is. Okay, yeah.
That's where I mean, it's always like cutting bar boards or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I usually, from Cumberland, I'll take a left, right at Jordan Road to get onto Bay Road. Okay. All right, so just write that. All right, so right, we're farmers. I see. All right. Yeah, okay.
So that's the cemetery.
We are two one. We are two one.
I mean, at least this one there, very close to the road.
Talk about how you wanna send.
Yeah, we're still.
Yeah, I'll just write up a draft email and send it to you. You can you can edit it and then I'll send it out.
All right, hey, everyone. Thank you.
Night, Brad.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
All right, so what, so the woods at Farm Road, forty B development. Planning board to consider providing comments to mass housing for our forty B development project. Off of Farm Road, but construction of four single-family homes on a two-acre site. And so one of them would be affordable, I assume, right?
One unit will be affordable.
Affordable unit.
Is there a plant at all associated with this?
There's not, no, there's no.
Okay.
There's no major species. It's just, yeah, four.
How many? What's the, uh, what's the square footage of these houses?
Uh, they're roughly gonna be about eighteen minutes per feet.
Oh, like that.
Yeah, they're smaller style. Um, the developer's sort of considering them cottage style, like what he told me today.
But.
He had a site visit with mass housing this morning.
But even not, even not even considering affordable, we need those size houses, yeah.
So what, how was your meeting with mass housing?
It was fine. So all various town officials were there. There were, I think, one one board member from ZPA was there. Um, so really, the biggest concern from TPWM Police was the driveway entrance for the two homes off of Berlin Road because it's sort of on the curvature of the road. They're concerned about that. So
Yeah.
the developer and his engineer, who's Ducharme Dillis, are gonna go back to the drawing board and they're gonna try and just shift that entrance down to where there's the sort of the T area, you know, the T of the of the driveway. They're gonna essentially shift it down.
Dump to where?
Basically, they're done here.
They're gonna put it down.
They're gonna just shift this all the way here.
I thought you said she was this one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Well, same idea. So they're gonna just shift this down.
Further into the buffer.
Yes, this will go straight into this house and then, you know, this person can just turn.
So a little bit more.
It'll be a little further into the buffer, but no further than where the.
Wait, just as another thought, would they be okay with coming in here for both of them and then not having any curb cut on Berlin Road and only having it on Farm Road?
Right, we didn't discuss it and we're like.
No, because that'd be a common driveway, so it's your shared.
Is that okay, though? I mean, why not? I just.
It's just a lot of.
Berlin, we have a lot of traffic on Berlin Road. You just, if you could.
Yeah, yeah.
There's almost none on Farm Road.
Exactly. So if you could just have the one curb cut on Farm Road, come in for the four four houses.
Yeah.
We can make that one of your comments.
I I would just ask to look at it. Ask them to look at, um, having just one curb cut on Farm Road. Maybe it's a little bit bigger. I don't know, but, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, because it's forty B, I mean, do we, like, something like a curb cut, can we prevent that if if the site lands still?
I don't think so.
No?
Oh.
I mean.
Um, so already they've reduced it. Initially, they were showing four, um, single driveways for each.
Okay.
And now they've reduced it down to two.
Holy God.
Um, so it's definitely an improvement from what we initially saw. Um, but certainly it's a negotiation. We can't necessarily make them do it, but we can certainly.
It looks like it's, is it a shared well as well as shared septic?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, probably one well.
So it's not like we've been impeding wells or septic by requesting the driveway be connected.
No, and that's what I was saying. Keep the driveway where you've got it off of Farm Road and just loop it around.
It's just, I mean, it's a lot of extra pavement, I guess, but.
But you don't have, I don't know, coming out of, well.
Coming out of on on Berlin at a corner like that.
It's just.
I mean, it's it's just.
Yeah.
Because if somebody was coming out Farm, they're gonna be looking.
They're gonna be looking back on Berlin.
Be looking right. Exactly.
Yeah.
They're not gonna, and that's probably because they're gonna be looking at Berlin and all of a sudden someone's coming out of the driveway.
Yeah, and that is right by the Strangle Road intersection.
Exactly. It's literally, you've got an intersection here and here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just.
Yeah. I mean, for that matter, even even bringing the driveway up on, you know, onto Farm, keeping it, you know, with the two curb cuts would be better than having on Berlin.
Yeah, you you could do something like.
Extend the other end of it to be the driveway.
Right, yeah, like just do this.
Yeah, you could do something like this, kind of come off of here.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Um.
That would be better.
It would be better than this, and getting one curb cut would be preferable.
Yeah, I mean, I would say having, ask them to have two, one or two curb cuts on Farm Road and zero off of Berlin.
We can certainly do that. They were also gonna look at, um, teeing up the intersection between Berlin Road and Farm Road.
Oh, so they, yeah.
They didn't think they were gonna be able to do it, but they were gonna look into it.
Sorry, what is that?
Did you say?
So make this a T, so this would come in, like, this would be safer, so instead of a lot, they get a T intersection.
Oh, fitting the intersection?
That'd be huge.
But they didn't, they didn't think that the right-of-way was, we have sufficient right-of-way there, and so that's a whole, they're gonna be down.
It's like a pretty expensive.
Yeah, I mean, that's all, I mean, I'm sure public ways would prefer that, but.
And so TPWM was, they would, sure, yeah.
What is the land across the way? It looks like, it looks like a storage facility.
No, it's a.
Oh, yeah, if you look at the parcel line, they're not gonna.
I'm just saying, what is, what is all that stuff?
That's whatever's on.
Didn't need a taking.
That's whatever's on...
Exactly.
House of Farmer.
It's a house and barn, and he does, and he has lumber and stuff there. This picture looks like trailers. Yeah, well, there may be some of those in there too, I don't know, but...
Pharmaceutical factory.
Pre-existing pharmaceutical companies.
Are they gonna go in front of the design review board?
I haven't asked them this time.
No?
I haven't, no.
I think, yeah, going off Farm Road would be better than Berlin.
I just think Shell was gonna...
'Cause I think both, both, both this, both this intersection and intersection, their cars are gonna be looking at...
Yeah. So I had initially, when we met, asked them to look at, rather than doing four single-family homes, do two, two-family dwelling units, and they shot that down. I still think it's a good idea for this particular location. That way, you, you know, rather than having four buildings, you would only have two buildings, and it, they would more than likely get them at conservation as well, but they...
Didn't want, didn't want to do it.
What was their reason for that?
Markability, I guess.
Yeah, I, you know, I asked and I didn't really go through the response.
You could keep the same square footage. I mean, you just come, hold on, I got...
We can, we can keep pushing for, I can show you the examples that I had sent him that I thought would work well here, um, but...
And maybe if the driveway is, if it's a common drive, that he can swing the houses around a little bit, and maybe it makes more sense. He's all coming home for duplexes over on...
Yeah.
And perhaps maybe that's why he shot it down when I...
'Cause people are so against duplexes, it seems.
Yeah, but the ones that I was...
That had nothing to do with the duplexes.
What I was proposing, though, had, didn't look anything like the ones off the Stover Room, completely different.
Or maybe he, yeah, he probably, you know, single families you can make. No, I've heard people complain that, like, duplexes will bring down value.
I need a lot across the street, I think that's...
Nobody I wanna state, yes, there are people who have that opinion.
Some people have that opinion. I like the style of the house, though.
I mean...
More, more...
Like, yeah, I would love to get more eighteen hundred square foot houses in town. Housing diversity, we need it. I mean, I have no issue with it. Anything else to discuss on that?
Does, does the board officially want to make any comment to mass housing at this point? Or do you only want me to go back to the developer and say, "Hey, can you take a look at..."
Well, I guess our standard used design review board and if you can, suggested right...
So, so do you want me to provide comments to mass housing, to include the design review and the driveway then?
If we, if we need to, uh, the driveway for sure.
We don't match with that comment, I mean, Boris Sleckman may have something, I'm not sure. It's only if...
I, I mean, I would say it would be good for us to provide, you mean, provide comment to the Boris Sleckman? Is that what?
Yeah, it, well, yeah, I mean, essentially, we go to Boris Sleckman, and Boris Sleckman had no other comments.
I mean, it would, I think that the main comments are the driveway stuff, you know.
What, what's on Farm across from that, are we...
There are, well, there's the, um...
Oh, is there another driveway right across from where we're looking?
No, because I asked that, so the, the driveway that's across is further up. It's not across from it.
Over towards South Holden, you mean?
Um...
Yeah, yeah.
What's on this property right now, is it just a single-family home?
The other driveway's more up in here, so that's where it's not directly across from there, it's further up here. 'Cause it's, this, this, we were looking at this utility pole, and the driveway of this property was further up.
Well, but, so we were, we were just saying that, can you draw on this?
Yeah.
I mean, we were saying if we could just extend that, but then now we put it right into that driveway, you see? Yeah, but I mean, you've got, I mean, you've got two houses on one side and one house on the other side, and it's not, you know, it's not like it's a... Yeah. Two major subdivisions.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay. So, I don't know, I mean, whether you wanna make it official to mass housing, but I think we suggest moving the driveway and have, um...
And or limiting the driveway, can they have just one driveway from Farm Road? Or moving the second driveway from Berlin Road onto Farm Road?
And then have DRB review it. And, I mean, I think, I mean, if we have a preference to do those duplexes, to reduce the footprint and, and move, and move stuff out of the buffer zone, we should provide that feedback.
Exactly, something...
I mean, I can show you the example.
I don't know, how do you think that they can...
Oh, so if this is a duplex, you hear that plenty of pieces sliding over.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying.
So three, three could slide closer to four, and then two and one could slide, shift up.
One could slide closer to...
Well, and, and that, yeah, depending on how it works, you know...
Would they try to put six there if they were doing duplexes?
No, because I think that for the design of septic and stuff, they're kind of limited to the number of bedrooms and all of that.
Yeah, if you said, if you put six on there, you'd add, add another fifty percent to the...
You can add, just consider doing two duplexes instead of four single, I mean, as a comment.
Yeah, I, I mean, if they're marketing as cottages, though, they're just not gonna do that.
I mean, the town is kind of, the town's like officially on the books against duplexes, so, I don't know.
I think, I think it's a...
It's a forty-B...
I mean, the fact that they're eighteen square feet is good.
They can just do it.
They're eighteen square feet, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, you know...
I mean, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm more concerned with the driveway than anything else.
Yeah.
Berlin.
It just reduces the appearance of the density, that there are multifamily versus single family on a corner, a two-acre corner hall. That was my, you know, that was part of the...
Yeah, they, they reduce the appearance and it was out of the buffer, you know...
And getting it out of the, yeah, getting it out of the buffer as much as we could.
On the other hand, if we had smaller cottage-type houses like this, maybe it makes it easier to...
To sell it.
To sell those in other parts of town.
Right. Just share people, it's not the end of the world.
Alright, so, I guess there's two comments, and I will send it to Boris Sleckman, I guess?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yep, 'cause they're gonna be reviewing there in a meeting.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Whatever that is, don't have to make any mistakes.
Alright, master plan. Did you, uh, give us the updated, um, charter or not?
I didn't, um, because I think you've basically seen it now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Excuse me. And that's been, that's been posted to the, on the website, Facebook, it's going in the paper.
Yep.
Um, I think probably the next step of the charter, I'll likely email it now to all board and committee members, um, to let them know that it's out there, and if they're interested or not, anyone that's interested.
Should we just go one person so far?
So far, we have one, one person.
I think she'd be number one. Should we, um, start reaching out to people?
Definitely, yeah, it's out there.
Well, I'm saying, but, you know, handpick some people.
Yes, mhm. If any, you know, if you have someone in mind, I'm happy to reach out to them for you, or...
What's her name? Gray?
Oh, um, I think it's Sugar Ray.
Yeah. We should definitely reach out to her. We gel to a how? What do you think? Mr. Yezmy?
No.
I don't think he'd be interested.
But his work schedule's pretty crazy.
Yeah. Anybody else? Just need a good cross-section of people. Someone has posted on the, uh, I think you posted on, on the, uh, there's comments on Facebook page, I don't, there's a separate mothers...
There's a mothers group.
Mothers group, maybe posting on there, and that might pick, pick up some of the...
What, what do you want me to post on there, just that, there's just something I can copy?
I can just send you the warning for the charter, and you have to post the charter.
Yeah.
Yes, if you want something to make.
Yeah, I'll send it to the entire board, and then I, you guys can just send it to...
Yeah, secret little group.
It's definitely not secret. I wouldn't say it's anything but that.
You know, that may pick up some different...
But there's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic on it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well...
There's a lot of traffic.
It's good, it's good. I do think that there's people on there that probably aren't as active on the community. That are, don't want...
So, we'll put it out and see.
We need, um, we need to get the average Bolton resident represented, not the most active.
Well, I think you wanna cross-section the rest of the bunch of them.
Well, I'm just saying, we need, we need to get, I would love to get, I would love to get a few people who haven't been on any board or anything at all. You know? Just like a completely new perspective. If that person exists, probably.
You're one right out of the gate with this community. You are a scum for one.
No, but potentially somebody who has, like, you know, sort of a job like yours or something, who hasn't been involved in the town, or politics, you know? A nice, fresh perspective.
And then I've just been updating the master plan, um, as much as I can at this point.
Okay.
It's in pretty good shape, um, I've started to reach out to the, to some of the boards and, and committees. Um, I'm gonna be meeting with the historical commission early September, at some point, I'm gonna meet with the Ag Commission, and hopefully, out of these meetings, I can get just their initial input into the master plan, um, get a better understanding of what they've done for the last ten years, to promote whatever goals they had in the plan. Because if none of them are not clear to me...
Laura Roberts of Parks and Rec...
Yeah, I know.
Said that, she, well, she, she, she talked to me, she said, you know, "Should I join the steering committee? I want Parks and Recs to be represented," but I said, you know, "I think their plan, I think their plan is that there would be subgroups, so that maybe Parks and Rec gets involved in that particular subgroup."
I mean, I definitely intend to reach out to all of the board and committees for their participation in this, at least for the moment, but I need...
I mean, also, but if someone is willing to be on the main aisle, if they want to...
Yeah.
Well, what her thing was, like, her, her, she was like, "I don't necessarily wanna be on the main committee,"
Oh, okay, okay.
but I want Parks and Recs, I want Parks and Recs...
So she would be... Okay, so she says she wants to be a separate.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I remember if there's a separate, specific Parks and Rec piece, or whether that touches some of the... Her only thing was, will her...
I think it's more than that, more than that, yeah.
Basically, what she was asking me is, will she have a spot for input if she's not on the steering committee?
Of course she will, that's my...
Well, yeah, I mean, part of the whole process is gonna be public outreach and presentation and, you know, all that sort of thing, so...
But the town is now, actually, I think they've hired now, um, an official Parks and Rec...
Yeah, yeah.
Person.
They've hired somebody?
Yeah, they did. I don't know exactly when they start, but, you know, so there'll be coordination on that end.
I think that'll be good. On that, so Stowe has a Parks and Rec person, like we did the Camp Stowe this year for a little bit. That person is so responsive, they get back to you so fast.
I'm good.
And Stowe does such a good job with their programs and stuff, so it'll be good to get somebody working, yeah.
How do your kids like Camp Stowe?
Liked it a lot, yeah.
My kids did it a couple of years ago.
Yeah, they liked it. It's favorite of, unfortunately, it's the most expensive one.
What's it?
Pompositic.
Oh, yeah, no, we did, uh, Lawrence, Lawrence Academy this year was the first one.
Yeah.
Um, completely brand new, but, um, I like it. Actually, I'm overnighting, I have my kids one week, two nights, I can get rid of them for a week.
Oh, really? Yeah.
We'll see.
Well, Pompositic is the whole split pride area.
I've heard, yeah, I've heard that, I put kids there.
And they have, they have the project store, which does zip lining and all that stuff, so... Of course, the most expensive one's his favorite.
Uh, well, this one, they have one week where they do field trips every day, so my sons went to Apex, boat-a-board, museum aside.
Well, so Stowe does a field trip, one field trip every...
Well, to, well, every, yeah, every Wednesday, yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Remember that.
Well, that's not on the agenda.
Sorry. Yeah.
Approval of minutes.
Approval of minutes.
Okay.
Oh, just to let you know too, with the charter, I had to give it, like, an end date to when we needed people's, you know...
Yeah.
Interest back, um, so I just, I just selected, uh, September twentieth, and I think hopefully by, by September twenty-fifth, we can appoint a committee at that point.
Yeah, hopefully people are coming back into the real world September first or so, or August twenty-eighth, actually, twenty-ninth. When does the real world start again? August twenty-ninth?
The kid did.
Yeah. I've been talking to a brother in South Carolina, his kids run back last week.
Wow. Town Souths can go back early.
Until they get, do they get open?
Do they get out in May?
Like, yeah, they get out earlier.
Oh.
Well, they probably have AC year-round, so that's not...
I didn't catch it, I didn't hear what you said.
That, that... I wasn't justifying your anti-southern... My, my brother, my brother's part of the army of occupation down there, so... I don't know, I have my, uh, meeting minutes. Do a lot of shuffling, maybe he's in here. Alright, there's somewhere. Alright, so we got July eighteenth, May twenty-second, and March twenty-seventh.
Which is in February.
February twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh.
Yep.
Now, are there ones in between that worked on, or we just...
No, you've approved some of them, so I think we're pretty much cut up for two thousand and nineteen, I think there's one left.
Yep.
Um, and then I gotta get back our other two thousand and eighteen.
Twenty-seventh. There should be five from the...
I have one, oh, I have four, I believe four.
That's four.
There's February, March, May, and July.
Right.
Oh, that, that's the agenda.
Yeah.
Four eight minutes for tonight? Okay, four, yeah.
I'm good.
Good.
To make a motion to approve the February twenty-seventh, March twenty-seventh, May twenty-second, and July eighteenth of two thousand and nineteen minutes.
Second. Favor?
Aye.
Alright.
And then we'll set the schedule up for next meeting, for the bomb.
I think we're, I thought we were gonna say we're gonna be eleven twenty-five.
We have, it'll be standard, but I'll actually pick the...
Nine twenty-three, and then one in November, one in December.
Yeah.
Like, the thirteenth, and then the eleventh.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second. On favor?